I call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, June 28th, 2023. And please call the roll.
Sure. Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Lang?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
Commissioner Braun?
Here.
And Chairperson Hattigan?
Here.
We have quorum. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce our new member, Alex Lang. Thank you. Very happy to have you on the commission.
Thank you for keeping here.
Great. And let's see, we have no one, no other officials in attendance, so we can move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 26th, 2023?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun?
Aye.
And Chairperson Hattigan?
Motion is approved. Next, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting, or I'm sorry, the special meeting minutes for May 1st, 2023? So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any changes? Anne, please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Braun?
Aye.
Chairperson Hattigan?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Is there anyone present who would like to speak during this time about an item that is not on the agenda? No? Okay. Moving right along to the village board update. Anne, do we have one of those for tonight?
Yes, we do. Thank you. During their meeting on May 4th, the village board appointed Commissioner Lang to the commission. Commissioner Lang?
I'd like to also note that the village board also appointed Filipino law firm as the village attorney for a term of one year. Robert Pickrell will be the point in contact for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Mr. Pickrell will attend meetings to provide support during public hearings and other items that need legal support. During the June 15th meeting, the village board expressed support for a residential stormwater management permit incentive program. It's a mouthful, but the program would offer property owners a one-time building permit fee credit of up to $250 for projects that improve drainage on a property by using one or a combination of five project types, which includes rain gardens, dry wells, drain tiles, downspout disconnections, and the mitigation of water discharge by relocating some pumps or other drainage devices. So Assistant Village Manager Monroe will present the final version of the policy to the village board in an upcoming meeting, likely July 20th. And this program will be a good first step in addressing residential drainage issues and incentives that result from our examination of impervious surface standards may be able to tie into this program.
Could you repeat the name of that?
Sure. It's the Residential Stormwater Management Permit Incentive Program. And the board packet from the June 15th meeting includes a summary of the program and a double sheet flyer and an example of the application form. And I'll send a follow-up email to the commission after the meeting with those materials for your review.
Thank you.
That was the extent of my update.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Our first, our first and only item of new business is the discussion of the 2024 work plan, which if you're following along electronically starts on page 13. Anne, would you mind introducing this to us?
Sure. The village board requested that the 2024 Board and Commission work plans be prepared in advance of the board's September 15th meeting. So getting started on that process, that we have a discussion about the draft items on the work plan, and then in the July or August Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, you all can approve the plan for that September meeting. So I included the 2023 work plan as an attachment to the memo for your consideration as a starting point. Whether the commission wants to include all or some of these items is for discussion tonight. And then I have been taking notes from previous meetings for items that we may want to add to the work plan for your consideration in addition to any other ideas that you might have. Would you like me to review the suggested items, or would you prefer to just open up the table for discussion?
I think we can open it up for discussion at this point.
Sure.
But before we do, I did have a question.
Sure.
So it seems like the expectation is that we have the work plan be adopted and sent to the board by September. If there are items on the 2023 work plan that we have not completed by the end of the year, can we have those carry over?
That was my, that was my thought, is that we would start with the 2023 work plan as if you want to roll those items over into 2024. That might be a good starting point.
All right. So the first item for consideration is revising the zoning code to permit second-story deck-like structures. This came from our variation request for 95 Groveland Avenue, where as a commission, we agreed that these are deck-like structures are not exactly decks as defined in the zoning code. I think this one is one that I would be in favor of including within the work plan. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I think it's a good item to discuss without saying how I think one way or the other. The only suggestion I have is if maybe, should we start using the term terrace instead of deck-like?
Can you repeat that?
Use the word terrace instead of deck-like or something else? Because even in your paragraph, you disfavor views of deck or deck-like. So maybe a new term that's not currently in the code.
Yeah, I think that'll be part of the discussion is what do we call these things? All right. Unless anyone has any objection, I would suggest that we include that in the work plan for 2024. Next, the definition of grade and how average grade is calculated. Commissioner Miller, would you mind explaining that one a little bit?
I just, I have gotten the impression from living in Riverside and then the time that I've been in the PCC here, is that it's never clear to me that the concept of grade is actually applied when it comes to things being done in the village when inspections are made and things like that. And so I looked at what that definition of grade is, and I find it to be fairly vague right now. The average level of the finished surface of the ground adjacent to the exterior walls. To me, it seemed finished surface, I don't even know what that means, but certainly to me, it could mean that someone could do some construction or change the shape of the land and then measure it and then say, "This is my grade," when it's actually a totally new elevation. And then the other thing is about adjacent. It's like how far out is adjacent. And I would think that that needs to be specified a little bit more. Adjacent, does that mean the first inch? Does that mean the first foot? What does that mean? I think it would just improve the way things are done in the village, and it would give a lot more certainty to everyone.
Sure. I'm certainly open to that idea.
No objections. Just, it sounds like we just need to add clarity.
Okay. Also include item number two. Number three, consider allowing non-conforming accessory buildings to be elevated to the maximum allowed height. I wasn't entirely clear what the intent of that one is. Anne, are you familiar with that?
Sure. So this was just a suggestion from a homeowner that we received. And basically, it is a non-conforming accessory building because it's larger than 800 square feet. So basically, it would be making a change to a non-conforming accessory building. In fact, they would like to possibly raise it. Now, this was kind of a discussion point that the homeowner brought up. You know, it may or may not be feasible based on that specific garage, but they said, you know, for example, the garage was currently built at 16 feet. You know, it's possible to raise it so the peak height is 20 feet now, according to our standards. That would be making a change to a non-conforming structure. It wouldn't be making it more non-conforming, but it would be making that change. And I just wanted to see if there's any appetite on the commission for that as a possibility.
I'm still not 100% certain I understand that. I mean, I think I might, but so what we're saying, I mean, because it seems to me when you say, allow, allow non-conforming buildings to be elevated to the maximum allowed height, maximum allowed height to me means that's the maximum allowed. So certainly you could do it. But are you saying that you're talking about a building that's already non-conforming?
Right. Would that be?
And it's only, and I don't know, I'm not an architect, but it's kind of 10-foot-high garage roof or something?
Sure.
And you want to raise it to 20 because 20 is now allowed by the code? Is that what it is?
Exactly. It would be increasing the bulk of a, I think one of the concerns that I had was the fact that it's a larger in bulk than we would normally allow a garage to be. So the maximum, the maximum size of accessory structures, 800 square feet. And one of the discussions that we had in terms of accessory structures and the height was the concern about the bulk. So just a point for thought, you know, whether that needs to be on the work plan or not, but for a point of discussion.
I'm struggling with this one only because we just did the revisions for second, or additional spacing garages. And I would think that we've already got enough room within that existing language to allow the resident to work with. Like, I don't know that we need to add another, like, honestly, to me, this sounds like, come, come to us and show us where the hardship is in not making, in not meeting the current rules.
So maybe more appropriate for a variation if it's required? Okay.
I agree with you all. I think that this seems like a variation, almost, you know, there should be a variation, I think.
It wasn't clear to me if it's even necessary. I mean, because of what we just did with increasing the 20-foot height, and then what it says in the non-conforming structures provision, just 10106. So when I compared the two, I just wasn't sure if we needed to do anything, or if, but I assume you've looked at it in more detail.
Yeah. I wanted to get basically your feedback, and it sounds like the general feedback is if a variation is required for that kind of use, that you'd like to see it via variation.
I think so.
It was a, it was a comment made by a citizen. I don't think there's a huge clamor for this type of thing, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention and get your feedback. So I appreciate that.
Number four, decreasing the minimum 10-foot separation between primary buildings and accessory buildings. Commissioner Marhol?
This somewhat came out of the previous discussion, year or two ago, maybe longer, upon, now I'm forgetting all my street names, but where a greenhouse was being proposed that was within 10 feet, a little bit less. I know that there's some building, some. Basically, if someone would like to build such a, build an accessory building with closer to the primary than the 10 feet, that's probably okay as long as it fits within the building code. Sorry, the building code being fire and safety issues. Generally, that just means additional drywall or fire protective elements.
So the, the building code does not require a 10-foot separation between accessory structures and primary structures. It does require fire-rated materials on the exterior and interior of garages that are less than three feet from the dwelling. So that, that is a requirement. If the commission would like to pursue this further, what I can do is research the background of the 10-foot separation requirement and see if I can figure out where that came from to provide some context. If it's a non-starter, then, you know, I wouldn't do the research and we wouldn't add it to the work plan, but.
I'd like to see us take a look at this to be as consistent as possible between the zoning ordinance and the building codes. Next up, review the standards for text amendments to remove redundancies. It's a suggestion from our former chairperson, Mateo. I think if there are redundancies we're aware of in the code, we should go ahead and take care of those.
I agree.
Next, consider reducing the minimum parking requirements in all zoning districts for all non-residential uses within proximity of a transit facility. Commissioner Miller, would you mind going over that?
Sure. I, Planner Siren pointed out to me that the way I was reading the TODD-related zoning changes that we just made would not actually allow a 20% reduction in parking requirements for all non-residential uses within a transit-oriented area. And I think that's a quarter, quarter-mile from a bus stop and a half mile from a train or whatever. So for example, when we had the D-96 come in front of us, it seemed to me, oh, this is going to apply to the school because it's clearly within a half a mile of the train station. But Planner Simon pointed out to me that although there is a footnote in the newly-approved TODD ordinance, I forget what it is now, it's 10...
It's 1089.
9, yes. There's a table. It says what the parking requirements are. It allows for reduction for trans, in transit-oriented developments, but there's a footnote 1 and there's a footnote 2. And there's a reason why they're footnotes and they're not in the text, because they only apply to certain items, certain non-residential uses. So for instance, it applies to government offices. It doesn't apply to schools. So I think that was not my understanding when we approved those TODD-related changes. And I think it's worthwhile for us to look at that and see if we want to allow for greater flexibility in parking space requirements for some of these other uses in transit-oriented areas as we justify them.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. Seems like it's worth talking about for sure. And number seven, consider allowing certain residential properties to have fences up to six feet in height on the side of the property as long as the fence does not extend past the front of the house. Anne, would you mind discussing that one?
Sure. This was a suggestion that I had based on conversations with a homeowner on Berkeley Road. So on where the house is located, it's next to an alley that separates the alley from an adjacent commercial use. So there's an alley that's a separate parcel and the commercial use on the other side of the alley. The way that the house is oriented, it's kind of on a corner. And so the side of the house, basically, a fence that is four foot tall along the side of the house would not actually provide that much privacy from the alley along the side of the house. And that's the requirement, is that for the, starting at the face of the house, for the first 40 feet back, or until the back of the house, whichever is first, the fence can be up to four feet in height. After the back of the house or 40 feet, the fence can go up to six feet in height. And for a few select properties, I think in the village, I think there's a way to write the ordinance to provide those folks extra privacy that a six-foot fence would provide without requiring them to get a variation. And I don't think that would necessarily damage the character of Riverside or the intention of the ordinance.
I don't know that I'm 100% sold, but I definitely think it's something that's worth talking about. So I would recommend adding it to the work plan. All right. So nodding heads, so we'll add that one as well.
I agree with your assessment.
Thank you. All right. So let's see. Then we can talk about this next at our meeting on July 26th. And there's still an opportunity, if anyone has any additional ideas, to feel free to send them to myself and Anne, and we can work those in. All right. Next, we can move on to old business. And that is the discussion regarding front yard porches and decks in the Groveland, Lincoln, Kimbark area. If you're using the electronic version of the packet, it starts on page 25. Anne, could you start us off, please?
Sure. As a brief background, this came as the result of a request for variation at 95 Groveland Avenue to allow a deck to encroach five feet into the street yard. It was classified as a deck because it didn't have a covering over it. And it also wouldn't be attached to the house, I think. And though I think the definition of that, I think, could use some clarity, in my mind at least. But in any case, the thing that would prevent the homeowner from just adding a roof structure and creating a porch was a limitation on porches. What the code says is you cannot have a new porch that would encroach any closer than 20 feet between, to the street line. And that home was, the front of the foundation of the house was 19 and a half feet to the street line. So basically, there was no way to put a porch in front of the house. They couldn't have a deck because decks aren't allowed in front yards. And so the homeowner requested a variation, and because there are nothing unusual about the property, effectively, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't recommend approval, and the village board didn't recommend approval of the variation. But the village board did suggest that that area of, the village might be different than the rest of the village and may require additional consideration for the possibility of allowing front porches and street yards, and asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider it and provide their feedback back to the village board. So on the April 26th, the commission discussed the issue and didn't reach a consensus, but discussed several issues and provided some direction for staff moving forward. A couple of the points I have updates on. One was to survey properties on Groveland, Kimbark, and Lincoln, and that information is provided in the packet. And the other point, and I'll go over that in a second, the other point is to research whether carving out exceptions for certain areas of the village would affect the village's landmark status. And the answer to that is not very satisfyingly firm. It's a maybe, which is what it always is, I think. Until you have something firm for consideration, you know, maybe it could affect the landmark status. I think probably no is the, is the outcome that, from the feedback that I received. So effectively, the landmark status, as I understand it, is taken as a whole. So there are many parts that affect it. It's not based on one building or one street. It's the entire design of the village as a whole. So to affect the entire design of the village as a whole, if one part is affected, does that challenge the status of the landmark? Probably not, but more detail should be provided before any steps are taken. And that would be my recommendation. Obviously, if we're going to make any changes to the code, that we have more detailed discussion with folks regarding the historic designation of the landmark status to get their input. But no one ever wants to give a definitive answer to something as vague as, could this possibly be an outcome? So with that lack of satisfying, yes.
Can I ask what entities you may have been trying to speak to?
Sure. I talked with Shippo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we'd been discussing a couple of other issues and, you know, kind of discussed that. And again, it's, we actually also discussed the proposed planning and development with a taller building, with a taller building effect, the landmark status, and probably not, no, was the response. So. In any case, so if we move forward with this, I'll have another conversation with Shippo with, if we do make changes to, you know, propose changes to the language, bring it forward to them and make sure that we have the most complete answer that they can give us, that we can provide the village board for their consideration. In the meantime, I did take a look at Groveland, Kimbark, and Lincoln, and provided some data for you all to look at. And you'll see that effectively, the, in all of these properties in the R3 district, they range from single-family to two-family to multi-family. The lot depths and sizes are approximately the same for, for all of them. They're rectangular-shaped lots. The street setbacks do vary, not significantly, but they do vary. Whether or not they have a porch or stoop or neither is listed there. And the type of porch, which is generally unenclosed and covered, is included. And also the distances, so that you can get a sense of what the setbacks would be for the different properties. I know that without seeing it on a map, it may not be super helpful. And I'd be happy to try to put this on a map if I can for you, if that would be more helpful. But at least as a starting point, you can see what the encroachment, especially of the foundation of the house, the depth of the porch, and then in addition of any stairs that encroach in the street yard would be on the different properties. So my intention is if you have any feedback on this, at this point, I'd be happy to make any changes. My plan would be for our next meeting in July to come back with the remainder of the survey on the properties on Quincy and Burlington, and to do additional research on the 2017 discussion on front porches and report back to you there. And then try to visually characterize some of this information in a map form, if that's helpful. I know the data is...
It's a great deal of work to do, I mean, it's impressive.
It was, and I wish that we were further along, but pulling the, we didn't, we don't necessarily have all the surveys scanned. So you have to, you know, pull the surveys, scan the surveys, scale the surveys, and then put the information together. So I'll be happy to continue on that. But if there's additional information you want me to research or to provide, I'd be happy to look into that as well.
I have a question on, when we're looking at the porch conforming or non-conforming, I saw in some of the notes, there's yes, but could not be built today. Is that a, it was non-conforming when it was built, or is there is an ordinance that came and changed that?
Not necessarily. And I think in most cases, the ordinance came after the porch. And without looking at the building plans and when that was built, it's hard to say. I'd say a lot of these houses are, would predate the ordinance, is my guess, without looking at the, when the ordinance was passed. But that's more for the information of, to understand that if you, if that property applied today, like 95 Groveland, it's the same situation, where if they came in today and they didn't have a porch, they couldn't have a porch. But they do. So that's, that was the benefit of including that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I'd also like to second the thanks for putting all this together. It is a tremendous amount of work. In, in going through what we have so far, I was trying to make some sense of it for myself. And I was looking at porches and stoops as really separate entities. And I noticed that our definition of a stoop is, is rather vague. And I was wondering if we would want to look at other communities to see if they regulate the size of a stoop to differentiate it between a porch or a deck.
I think that's an excellent point.
I think we struggled with that definition last time around as well.
Yes, sort of a, I know it when I see it type situation.
I think there's probably a little bit of data on that from other communities somewhere in the files, in the planning files. I think some of that work was done. Relating to that, I was wondering a little bit, so I looked at a few of the buildings themselves. And like, one of them, I don't know if you remember this one, is 75 Groveland. It's a tan house with, I don't know, I don't know if it's vinyl siding, but it's like clapboard, it's like vertical.
Okay.
And it, it has a solid face. And then on the right-hand portion of it, like the third portion of it, there's an inset.
Mm-hmm.
And then you called it an enclosed, covered porch. So I was just kind of wondering on that one. I'm just picking on that one. Was it the inset, or was, was there a determination that other area to the side of it was an enclosed porch, like a fully enclosed porch?
If I remember correctly, I think I remember that property. So if you were to divide the property up maybe into thirds, the front of the house into thirds, like two-thirds looked to me like a covered porch.
Okay.
And then one-third looked like it was covered but unenclosed. I think it had stairs leading up to it. I believe that's the property. That one, I...
No, that's the one. Yeah, that's the one.
I looked at aerial photography and angled photography, and that was my best estimation. You know, I can, without having more detailed information for each property, you know, this was, I think, my best guess at that being an enclosed porch.
So if it had only been that little inset area, would you have considered it a stoop? Or would you still qualify it as a porch?
There was another property that had one of those, and I didn't put that down as a stoop because I didn't think it met the definition of a stoop necessarily, I think, because it was inset to the property. You know, again, it's kind of a judgment call, you know, about whether you consider that a stoop or not. And in my mind, very clearly, there are some properties that very clearly have a stoop, where it's entirely made of concrete, it is not attached in any visually or physically seemingly to the foundation of the house. You know, there's no visual connection to it, typically uncovered, you know, with railings on the side. To me, that clearly meets the definition of a stoop, where there are some things where it's slightly less clear.
I think last time when we discussed it, there was some discussion of, could you put a chair or two chairs on the area and make it like a mini porch? But maybe going forward, not to make more work for you, but for people who are not looking at all the pictures, it might be useful to say like partial porch or something like that for some of these, you know, and not, because when I imagine a porch, I'm thinking of like the full width of the house with a railing.
Sure.
So just...
I'll, the other thing I'll do is I'll pull together some example photos and say, clearly this to me meets, you know, X, Y, it meets the definition because it meets all these criteria that are listed in the definition. To me, this is, meets two but not three, or one but not three. And we can discuss that and see if by using those photos, we may be able to refine the definitions a little bit more. Although I know Commissioner Marhol, you know, has experienced how difficult it is to define these things sometimes.
I was actually going to suggest the same thing that you just said, is a... I was actually going to suggest the same thing that you just said, is a picture, here's an example of what is definitively a stoop, a porch, and you've already said it, what falls into that gray zone?
What I'll, if there are certain areas, I think it might be challenging to depict all of this on a map. If there is a concern about, I know that Commissioner Marhol expressed concern about having a porch and then stairs also encroach, which is what I tried to capture with the distance from the front of the stairs to the property line. What I'll try to do, if it would work for the Commission, is to depict a couple of select areas where there seems to be a discrepancy between a very far out porch and stairs, and something that's more, that's further back, and pick a couple of things where there's some variation, so you can see what it would look like, especially if there's one where there isn't a porch, and someone might want to build a porch. You know, here's kind of what that would look like, pull out a couple of case studies, if that would be helpful.
Yeah. No, I think you did a good job with the survey data. I knew what you, I knew what you meant with the titles and the distances, so thank you.
Another improvement that might be useful to reviewers is, I just went through it, and I like listed how many single-family homes were on each of these streets.
Sure.
And then how many had a porch, and therefore how many didn't have a porch.
Sure.
Just like, so like on Groveland, there's three single-family homes with a porch, eight total single-family homes. Whereas on Lincoln, there's only four single-family homes. Two of them have a porch.
Sure.
Very different situation, and just by looking at that, someone can appreciate it's a different type of street, I think, and a different calculation.
Okay.
And I was also wondering, so you mentioned you were going to look at Burlington and Grove?
Quincy.
Quincy, sorry. Were you planning on looking at Pine and, basically Pine, I think, is the only one, maybe Forest?
Okay.
Because those are also in the R3.
Isn't West over there?
Yeah, but it doesn't really have a single family, has one, I think, well, maybe it has one or two, but I don't think, find anything useful, as I recall from walking through there on West.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Let me take a look at both of those and see if there's areas that I can pull out that would be comparable to what we're looking at.
Okay.
And I forget off the top of my head how, I think Pine is rather short, I think.
Yeah, it's the one that goes from like the river up by the fire station, the train station.
Yeah, and I think there's a few, I can't remember.
There might be a couple, but there are some older, single-family homes.
Yeah, I think Forest would be interesting, too.
Okay.
Because that's really the main terrier of a lot of those districts.
Okay. Yeah, I'll pull out those, and if I can't do the whole street, I'll just pull out areas that I think are more relevant.
And Forest, on the, on the south side of Forest, I think there are a number of houses, as I recall, that do have porches and have very short street yards.
Yeah.
Or shallow street yards, but-
Sure.
So I thought, I thought the statistics were very helpful. I thought it was really useful to see the street yard for homes that don't have porches and those that do have porches. I mean, I already have some ideas of what I, how I would propose a change to the text on this, but, yeah.
For the next meeting, would it be possible to receive this as the Excel file that I came through?
Sure, no, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can't put it in the, and I haven't tried before, if I can't make the packet in Excel, like if I can't include it in the, using our website, if I can't do that, I'll send it to you separately, or send it to the Commission.
Appreciate that.
As a separate attachment, yeah. Yeah, that'd be nice, so you could sort all the columns and, yeah.
All right, any other suggestions for next month's discussion?
Oh, you know, I think I had sent you a note, Anne, about this, but one of the interesting things I find is how, what is it called, the, you know, the right-of-way or whatever, and how that varies compared to the public sidewalk. And on Groveland, I think it's basically the same thing. In some areas of town, it is not, it's quite different, it could be five, six, seven feet different, so it gives people functionally a larger front yard.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe just having those maps, whatever they're called, those shadow maps that we have, with like very distinct lines, whatever that, you know, front property line is drawn, so we can see the difference, like maybe in some of these areas, I don't know, in some areas of Burlington or Quincy, maybe people are benefiting from a much wider public area, public parkway area.
Sure.
I think that would be interesting.
I'll glue that.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, those are some great suggestions. I look forward to continuing this discussion next month. And then our next item of old business is examination of impervious surface standards, which starts on page 29 in the PDF. All right.
The revised work plan for this effort is Attachment A, and this includes the Commission's comments from the April 26 meeting. And following that meeting, Commissioner Miller provided additional comments, which are listed in the background section of the memo for your consideration, about whether you want to include that in the memo. So at the Commission's direction, I'll incorporate those comments and any other Commission comments into the revised work plan. And my next focus will be on Elements A and B, comparing the village's definition of impervious surfaces with other communities, and compiling other related definitions and information about impervious surfaces. So that'll be in the update for the next meeting for you. So per Element F in the revised work plan, I collected data on impervious surface coverage for properties throughout the village, and primarily from Plassey Survey from Properties Sold between January and June of this year. Nearly all the properties are located in the R1A and R1AA districts, and those are included in Attachments B and C, for you to take a look at. So taking a look at the R1A district properties, there were 74 properties surveyed. Of those 74, 59 are conforming and have less than the impervious surface limit, which is 50% for the R1A district. Two properties are conforming and meet the impervious surface limit, which means they have exactly 50% impervious surface coverage, and 12 are non-conforming and exceed the impervious surface limit. So of the properties under the limit, the average percent under the impervious surface limit is 14.4%, and the median is 15%. And of the non-conforming properties, the excess amount of impervious surface coverage is an average of 5.6%. And then of the 22 properties surveyed in the R1AA district, 18 are conforming, one is conforming and meets the limit, and three are non-conforming and exceed the limit. Considering the non-conforming properties, the average excess coverage is 4.6%, and the average amount under the limit is 11.4%. And so I wanted to visualize this for you in some way, and so I worked with the GIS Consortium to create a map, which is Attachment D. And there is an interactive version of this map, which I'm going to try to figure out if we can make that public for you all. But basically, each dot on the map represents green meaning conforming, or red meaning non-conforming, each of the data points that we gathered. It's not the entire village, but I got as much as I could in the extent that would be usable. And then you can also see on the map the zoning districts. So R1A is a slightly lighter beige, and R1AA is slightly darker beige. And so you can see, there's a couple of areas that I focused on. In particular, there's a, an oval between East Gate and Long Common, where there's a number of dots there. And I pulled the surveys for all the properties in that oval, because I knew that there had been flooding complaints in that area, just to see where they were at. And then there was another area between Des Plains, and I think that is, oh gosh, now I forget, up on the left-hand corner of the, of the map there.
North Gate, I think?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I thought it was North Gate over there.
I think it is North Gate, thank you. Where there was another, we had recently received complaints about backyard flooding, so I pulled all of the plots that we have for the properties in that area. But in any case, generally, this will give you an impression of where we are in terms of conforming and non-conforming properties, in terms of impervious surface coverage. The goal eventually would be to make the different dots, and you can see on the right-hand side of the legend, it shows a range, so starting at the top, 13 to 17, 8 to 12, 5 to 7, to make those different colors and intensity, so it'd be a lighter red for the lower, for the less, you know, that's, and then darker for the higher numbers, but we're not quite there yet in terms of the mapping. But in any case, and then, you know, if we could eventually, you know, we'll have most of, I think, the village mapped, and be able to get a really good look at impervious surface coverage for the village. But as I said, this was, I just wanted to present to you and give you an idea of where we are in terms of conforming versus non-conforming properties. This is, these are properties that are recently surveyed, so the data is fairly reliable. And again, the, the next steps would be to take a look, like I said, in Elements A and B of the work plan, take a look at our definition of impervious surface versus other communities, and how they're measuring those impervious surfaces, for the next update for you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate all the work that went into this, and especially creating the map, visualizing the, the data is, I mean, to me, it's surprising what the results are. I wouldn't have expected this, but it'll be interesting to see more of that.
Yeah, and if there's any areas in particular that you all have an interest in, please let me know, and I'll, you know, start pulling the surveys from those, and I'll update this map as I go along and pull more surveys. So as I'm doing certificates of compliance, I'm adding the data, so this map will be updated on a regular basis.
Not an immediate request on anything like that, as the data comes through, I'd be really interested in seeing how certain areas overall, from a surface area perspective, work outside of individual lots.
Okay.
So like, as you've seen that R1AA area where you've highlighted a large number in that section, it'd be interesting to see what the overall area in terms of, excuse me, impervious surfaces looks like.
Okay, so, did you mean like, so for example, the oval between East Gate and Long Common?
Exactly.
To say like, total, because these lots are each, let's say, 10,000 square feet, we're talking about 200,000 square feet of coverage, out of that 200,000 square feet of coverage, in various areas, there's 25% impervious surface coverage? Is that what you're thinking?
Exactly, because you're talking about certain areas experiencing more flooding, or talking about that, it'd be interesting to see in those areas, what's the overall percentage of the surface area looks like that.
Okay. Yeah, I will do, I'll do the best I can to pull those. The best, and I'll try to think of a different way, or I'll discuss with some different folks, different ways to get the information. I know that some folks use, for GIS, LiDAR data to try to map out impervious surfaces, and I'll talk to the GIS Consortium and see what they have, and how reliable that is.
Perfect.
Okay. Oh, and if we do have the comments from Commissioner Miller for consideration, I didn't necessarily want to add them to the work plan without having a discussion about them, but in, on page two of the memo, in the background information, I have the items that were, that were added to the work plan based on the Commission's discussion during the April 26 meeting. And then under that, Commissioner Miller provided additional thoughts for consideration of the Commission for inclusion in the work plan.
I think some of, some of my comments are a little repetitive to what's already been changed, but- Added to the work plan. And then my second-to-last comment, where it says, "Consider codifying the condition that for properties that exceed the maximum impervious surface coverage, any new impervious surfaces on the property cannot increase the total existing coverage." As I recall, what I was referencing is that I think there was some informal discussion a year, two years, three years ago, that if someone is, has exceeded their impervious surface, and they come to us, like Mr. Srila did, with a proposal, and overall, he's, they're going to be reducing their impervious, but they'll still be over the percentage, I thought there had been some discussion on the PCC, and maybe at the board level, that that's okay, that we're, we don't, they don't need a variation. But I don't think anything was ever changed in the code to that extent, so that's what I was suggesting on that. Like I said, it's something that needs to be codified if it hasn't, then, or do we not want to do that?
I remember that discussion, I don't remember exactly the outcome, but I remember us talking about that, and certainly, we want to make sure that we're, that the code allows what we've all sort of agreed upon.
And don't remember, maybe it was when Sonia was here, and then she left, and the ball just got dropped, or what happened.
Bless you. The last bullet point seemed to have gotten cut off.
Yeah, I apologize for that, I just noticed that.
So I was wondering what that one was. Consider revising the non-conforming properties section of the zoning code to allow properties.
Let me see if I can find that, I apologize for that.
It almost seems like it's related to the bullet point right above, but, or in a similar vein to it.
I believe it was, and my computer is not currently responding to my request to open that file, so I will, I'll take a look at that, the remainder of that point, and include that in, for consideration during the next meeting.
Yeah, the idea is bringing properties closer into compliance than they are today.
Yeah.
I think that's worth talking about. But I'd say, I would, I would be okay with all of these items being added.
Okay.
Personally, didn't have a problem with any of them.
No problems? Okay, great.
All right, any, any further comments, discussion, thoughts on the impervious surface discussion? No? Okay, thank you, everyone. Moving right along to information, the status of the proposed development at 28 and 30 East Burlington Street.
Yes, I just had a brief update. I just wanted to let you all know that the property owner has not submitted an application for a public hearing for the project, which would be the next required step. So that will be moving forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission as the next step, if that does come forward, and you'll be notified as soon as that happens. And we'll include as part of, and we've discussed this with Attorney Pickrell, that will provide additional information for the Planning and Zoning Commission during that meeting about the planned unit development process, what constitutes a public benefit for your consideration, so that when you're reviewing the criteria for the first time, since we'll be doing that, you'll understand kind of what you're looking for. And you'll be here to be able to provide additional legal advice. So just a brief update there.
That would be helpful, thank you.
All right, we've come to the end of our agenda. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, July 26. Unless anyone else has anything else, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.